Like to call to order this regular town council meeting in council chambers. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
May, Councilor Danforth.
Here.
Councilor DeMay.
Here.
Councilor Higgins.
Here.
Councilor Mackin.
Here.
Chair Medor.
Here.
Councilor McGowan.
Here.
And Councilor Pelletier.
Here.
Would you please all stand and remove your hats and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, any adjustments to the agenda?
We had an update to the manager's report and the addition of Resolve Number Four Two Thousand Twenty Four.
Okay, thank you. Oh, approval of the minutes for the May eighth, two thousand twenty four special meeting and executive session.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor DeMay, second by Councilor Danforth, any council discussion? Down to the public, back to the council, all those in favor? Oh, we got to do it by straw, okay, Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council Mackin, Council Higgins. Council DeMay. Chair Medor, aye, Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now we move to special presentations and Resolve Number Two Dash Twenty Twenty Four. This is a proclamation for recognition of EMS Week, which is May nineteenth through May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four, Council Higgins, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolve Number Two, two thousand twenty four, proclamation in recognition of EMS Week, May nineteen, two thousand twenty four through May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. Whereas emergency medical services are vital public service, are a vital public service, and whereas the members of our emergency medical services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness illnesses or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and education, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of our emergency medical services team, whether full or part-time, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of our emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, the Town of Melanocke Council and council assembled on May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, will hereby proclaim and recognize the week of May nineteenth through May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, second by Council DeMay, any council discussion on the proclamation? Council Danforth.
Yes, thank you. The only thing that I would say is that every week is EMS Week. I could not imagine living in a community that we did not have these services, and I am very grateful for the services and the people that provide them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I for one think that this, as somebody who for the longest time had a father who was elderly, I saw firsthand many occasions where EMS through our local fire department did an incredible job with him, and I know he is just one example of thousands that have happened. You have an excellent staff chief, you have the support, the appreciation, and the admiration of this community as a whole for your work, for the work from previous years, and work will be done in the future. We are very fortunate to have you, and I think this is a great time to honor you and your staff. I also think the barbecue yesterday was very good, and I overate, and thank you for having it. Anyone from the public? Seeing none? All right, we'll go for the vote then. All those in favor, Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council Higgins.
Aye.
Council DeMay.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
And I will follow it up with an aye, it's unanimous. Could I please have you come up? Just to let you know, and I am, my apologies for not bringing it, but yesterday we got a certificate of appreciation from the fire department for the council for our continued support of the fire and EMS within the town, and which I thought was very nice and was presented at the barbecue. I will bring it to next meeting, I promise. Okay, let's move on to Council DeMay, if I could please have you read Resolve Number Three. What's this?
Yeah, yours works too well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council Resolution, Resolve Number Three Dash Two Thousand Twenty Four, State of Maine Community Development Block Grant Program. Whereas the Town of Melanocke wishes to apply the Department of Economic and Community Development for a Community Development Block Grant to carry out the Community Development Program, and whereas the planning process required by Maine law in the CDBG program have been complied with, including participation in the planning process by low and moderate income families and individuals, and the community has conducted at least one duly advertised public hearing, and whereas the Town of Melanocke is cognizant of the requirement that should be intended national objective of the CDBG program not be met. All CDBG funds must be repaid to the State of Maine CDBG program. Now therefore be it resolved by the council, the Town of Melanocke that the town manager, number one, is authorized and directed to submit an application for the Community Enterprise Grant Program in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to the State of Maine's CDBG program and to the Department of Economic and Community Development on behalf of the Town of Melanocke substantially in the form presented to this council. Number two, it is authorized to make assurances on behalf of the Town of Melanocke required as part of such applications, and number three, it is authorized and directed upon acceptance to said funds to carry out the duties and responsibilities for implementing and said programs consistent with the Charter of the Town of Melanocke and the laws and regulations governing, planning, and implementation implementation of community development programs in the State of Maine. Date enacted, authorized signatures. Thank you. Dot, dot, dot.
We action. Motion made by Council DeMay, second by Council Higgins, any council discussion on the resolve?
Seeing none. Yes, Mr. Manager, if you would please.
So this resolve is more of a formality in the process. We've been accepted for the program. This allows us access to step two, which is, or I guess it's step three at this point, which is you know, we, the next steps will be another public hearing, the release of the request for applications, which we completed yesterday and had reviewed by the CDBG. So we are planning on June thirteenth to discuss and present an order regarding matching funds. This resolve doesn't necessarily commit us to accepting the check or matching funds yet, but the overall program is it'll allow us to disperse a hundred thousand dollars in grants up to twenty thousand dollars, depending on the applications throughout commercial properties in the community to help with necessary facade updates, you know, if they need newer, more efficient windows or heat pumps or coats of paint, you know, signing, that sort of thing. And so we'll discuss the matching funds, the first meeting of June. I see Amber's got her camera on. Am I missing anything, Amber?
No, I'd just like to highlight, so June thirteenth, we would host the public hearing to give everyone in the community an opportunity to talk about the funds, and then we would present an order to accept not only the funds but provide a match, and the facade would cover anything on the outside of the building, so the manager had mentioned heat pumps, but unfortunately heat pumps wouldn't be included.
Thanks for that.
We good?
Yeah, we're, we're good. So this is just a step in the process to get that program up and running for the commercial property owners in town.
Very good. Any council discussion or questions? How about the public? Back to the council. All those in favor of Resolve Number Three, or Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Council Mackin, Council Higgins.
Aye.
Council DeMay. Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Medor, aye, it's unanimous. And now Vanna will come with your signatures, get your signatures. All right. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation by Brad Fitzgerald of the East Melanocke Police Department. This is a quarterly update. Brad, it's all yours.
Peter, come here. Can you give him a break? I wanted to, and you thought you guys didn't talk, maybe you got a little better idea of what to talk about. You may or may not have seen Peter and I weren't sure, so. It's the year to date, definitely. And wrong. Okay. So thank you for having us. First off, I know we haven't been able to come in and meet a lot. We've, Peter and I have had some discussions since the end of last year, beginning of this year, and there's some things that we wanted to work on, and we wanted to improve upon moving forward as we, you know, look at moving forward with the contract. You know, we haven't been able to really talk to the whole council really of what Melanocke PD truly is, and to give you know, a snapshot of the agency, our staffing, call volumes, and things like that. Some of you may have heard this before in previous meetings, but I want to give it to the whole council so everybody can hear it. So we are an eleven-person, full-time-staffed department, and that's including the positions in Melanocke, the positions in East Melanocke, and the position in Medway, along with, we have roughly eight part-time staff administratively comprised of Chief of Police, two sergeants, and a corporal. Our guys work twelve-hour shifts, we have a day shift, a night shift, and then two different evening shifts. Most importantly, one hundred percent our minimum staffing is a minimum of two officers. We will not drop below two officers. We will always have two officers on for many reasons. As you guys can see, the call volume is high, and officer safety in two thousand twenty-four is paramount. And as you'll see when we start going over some of the stats, what we're dealing with now compared to what dealt with five and ten years ago was completely different. There's a lot of calls now, a lot of people we deal with that is not safe and best practice to be dealing with it with one person, so we always have two officers on. So that is crucially important, and everybody knows that, twenty-four-seven around the clock, you know, if someone calls out sick, someone's coming in, or the chief's coming in on a Saturday. We do what we need to do, chief works patrol with the rest of us, because he'll tell you his philosophy is important to work with the guys and be connect, really know what's going on, so everybody in the department, all, all works. And then in the evenings, we could be anywhere, three to four officers, and then when we have special events, detail, things like that, we obviously upstaff a lot, so, you know, for the Eclipse alone, just East MeloPD, I think we had ten officers. The marathon I shared with the chairman, our operations plan, how many officers we had, and then as, you know, summer comes and we have these events, you know, we'll upstaff more people, and detail, funding, you know, upstaff officers. So, you know, the, yes, there's one, a minimum of one officer always assigned in Melanocke. The real important piece of that is they're assigned to this town as the primary for taking complaints, but every officer on staff has the ability to work and cover in all three towns, and to be quite honest, you'll, as you'll see by the call volume, Melanocke by far is our workload. So it's, last year it was well over fifty percent of our call volume, and then when I discuss a little bit this year, it's higher. So there might be one officer that's assigned to patrol Melanocke to take primary complaints, but a vast majority of the time, the other officers working are either coming up here to assist on calls or taking care of the overflow of calls, so it's not that one guy's getting hung out to dry and no one's coming to help. You know, we're one department covering three towns, so everybody is pitching in to do everything. So, and then obviously, as situations dictate, we will respond with however many are needed. If people need to come in, they will come in. We will do what needs to be done. Administratively, we have no administrative staff. All administrative duties are the responsibility of either the chief, the sergeant, or myself. We all have designated duties. The biggest reason you get here from me today is mine is mostly all of the, when it comes to statistics, scheduling, grants, all of that stuff is things that I take care of, equipment, crime reporting, so I felt it best that I speak with you guys about this. We also have a lot of specialized officers and certifications on our staff, so as we've highly publicized, we were very fortunate to receive a grant to purchase a canine, which is a, you know, not a purchase we want to put on the community, but a very huge asset to this region. That grant totaled over thirty-six thousand dollars, which covered everything from the cost of the dog and training, cruiser upfitting, because the cruisers need to be specialized for heat alarms and cold alarms and everything else for the dog. So once completed, Sergeant Clayton is the handler. She will be done on June seventh, and the dog will be certified in tracking, suspect apprehension, article searches, building and area searches, and most importantly narcotics. So we were very, very fortunate to be able to receive that grant, to be able to add that great asset to the Katon region. We also have a hostage negotiator on staff, child safety, child safety seat technician, a drug recognition expert, which we're able to get that training based off a grant as well, because the, to become a DRE, you have to be sent to Florida, where they go to the prisons down there and do a lot of their practical testing on inmates, because I know it's hard to believe, but they get a lot of drugs in jail, so that's where the best testing is. We have officers that are certified in A-Ride, which is mostly used for roadside impairment, people under the influence of drugs, firearms instructor, active shooter instructors, mark instructors, civil rights officer, foxalizer site, soon we're gonna have a taser instructor. So we have a lot of officers that are able to get specialized training, which is also a benefit to the whole department, the whole region. So next we can kind of talk about, I'll talk on some of the other grants that we kind of have working. So I discussed the DRE program, so we got a grant for the training, plus that grant also covered if she were to be called out off shift, they would pay for her overtime to do the examination. The K nine program, obviously that was all grant funded. Tomorrow, we will see the completion of a, this was a joint effort with East Melanocke Fire, but it also has, will have a benefit to the entire Katon region, where we got a grant, forty-five thousand dollars to add repeaters for our local frequencies. So these are not dispatch frequencies, but local frequencies used for like on-scene operations. So this will expand the radio coverage we have in the Katon region, and we're also gonna upgrade some outdated radios. We also were selected as a part of congressionally-directed spending through Jared Golden's office, which will cover the cost of body camera implementation and a Trunark drug testing device. We're waiting, waiting on that funding, but we know that it has been accepted. With body cameras will come a lot of administrative work, but it'll be a big benefit, but there is a, there's a very large cost to them. And then obviously, money through inland fisheries for ATV enforcement. So back to staffing, I think I mentioned, we have two current vacant positions of the eleven full-time positions, and to be quite honest, hiring in public safety as a whole right now, not just law enforcement, is extremely difficult. Where you're competing with every agency that's, you know, doing a dollar higher than the next agency to steal somebody to fill their vacancies, and they're just opening vacancies up in another agency. That's happening not just across the state, but all across the country, and it's all of public safety, I'm sure Chief Cody could tell you the same when it comes to firing EMS. It is very difficult to find qualified applicants for these positions, plus once you hire them and they go through the entire process with polygraphs and backgrounds, psych tests, and everything else, then you gotta get them through the academy. That's very time-consuming and very difficult to find someone that wants to do this. I think a lot of it relates back to, you know, the perception that public service has as a whole now, and based on, many people want to work nice weekends and holidays anymore, so it is, it is difficult. But we have been fortunate in the last couple of weeks to hire a couple of people to help fill some of the vacancies we had, because we were down to four vacancies. But even with that, we were continuing to maintain two-man staffing, paying the overtime to cover the shifts, to make sure that there was adequate coverage in the region. And then kind of lastly, on one of the points, like I had mentioned, now manager and I kind of found that there was a lack of solid communication between our agency department. And it was something that was discussed at the beginning of this contract, and then as staff changes and council changes and manager changes, it kind of got lost in translation, so that was one thing that made it a priority to bring back. And Peter and I have been able to talk regularly. I've made it very clear to call all hours of the night. He's been pretty good so far, hasn't he, up all night yet, but if there's an issue, he calls, we've been able to follow a lot of things, a lot of complaints that he's heard that, you know, got to the one side of the story and, you know, can hear the whole story, so it has worked very well to create that relationship and bridge that gap that we previously had, and that's something that will improve upon going forward. Let's, I think we'll see everything I have on my list. So just kind of the last thing I wanted to discuss is kind of what the call volume, kind of what things are looking like. So what you have in front of you is the completed statistics from two thousand twenty-three. So typically I send these out every month. We have not done any yet for two thousand twenty-four for various reasons. So we're required to report to the federal government crime statistics, and the system we use for that is currently broken, which is making it difficult. Plus, when I do statistics, I try and wait to get some information for the DA's office on some cases, so we're giving an accurate representation of arrests and offenses and such, so that's starting to improve, so you'll start to see the monthly, and when I do give a monthly, I do send them to Peter, so you guys can have them, but just a breakdown, so you know what you're looking at when you see this. Obviously, the top is just our total calls that we responded to in two thousand twenty-three, which again was a record year, we were just shy of eleven thousand calls, and it's broken down amongst the three communities. As you can see, Melanocke was more than half of our call volume. And then the other coverage area is basically when we go outside of our three communities to assist, whether it be sheriff's office or the state police. And then we talk about the total number of traffic stops, the arrested or summonses adults and juveniles, the average calls for the day. The next box with observed offenses, obviously you see that's a higher number than the total calls for service. So basically, what that shows is when an officer deals with an incident, if there are multiple offenses that they deal with, that's the more accurate representation of that call. So an officer might get called to a domestic, and when they get there, they could deal with, you know, someone with a warrant, violation of bail, drug offenses, et cetera. So, and, you know, all those offenses are captured in that one incident. So when you look at the subsequent pages, the column on the left is the offenses that are reported. Those numbers are the ones that reflect the total calls for service, and in the observed offenses are, in that column are the numbers that reflect that bottom number. So I'm not gonna go through all of these, I just want to highlight a couple, you know, big things that we've seen. So last year, we definitely saw an increase on assaults and assault on officers and aggravated assaults. So, and I think a lot of these things are driven by, if you look down, towards the end of the page, the amount of drug crimes that we responded to in two thousand twenty-three, which is again significantly high. We did have a very large reduction in our burglaries, which is, you know, on the positive note. And totally, we only had six last year, so that's, so that's big, but some of the other things, you know, bail and probation searches are high, because that goes to the proactivity of the officers. We still are seeing a very high number, and more so once we got a DRE on staff of impaired drivers. And surprisingly, I think this year, if I were to run the numbers, our impaired drivers that we're encountering are more likely impaired by drugs than they are alcohol. So thankfully, having that member on staff now, we're more easily able to investigate and prosecute those, those crimes, but the law in the state is it doesn't matter what you're impaired by, if you're impaired and you're operating against the law. And then mental health, we again are continuing to see increases of our calls for service for that. Like I said, I won't, I won't go through all of them, but it kind of gives you guys a breakdown of what you're looking at. If you have any questions on any of they, what they are, what they mean, I'm more than willing to explain them to you and kind of how we process all this. And I think for the most part, that's everything that we had. I know that Peter and I did talk about, this is something that we would like to do more on a quarterly basis, to at least kind of give you guys a snapshot of what's going on, but don't hesitate, like I told Peter, anytime, questions, comments, concerns, he can reach right out to me and I'll answer him day or night, so.
Well, that's a good start. So I'm going to the council. Any questions, comments, or concerns that you'd like to either to Brad or the chief? Council DeMay. Counselor Demme.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to first thank, uh, thank you for coming in today, uh, I really do appreciate. The improved communications, um, I got your phone number, so you've always answered anything that I've had. And I appreciate your cooperation with the manager, um. I appreciate what you guys do every day, uh, stepping up and uh, technically, it's not an easy job that you guys have. And very stressful. Um, especially with all the state legislative laws, we need to have laws that you guys have to deal with that do not make your job easy. Um, compound a lot of problems. So um, I just wanted to lead off with an positive note of thanking you for all that you guys do. And thank you for um, making this contract better than it, than it has been in the past, and I think communication is gonna be key. And um, I'll leave it with that, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Higgins?
I also wanted to say thank you, and. It's kind of sad. That over fifty percent of those. Is for this town. And actually, it's, it's sad, it shouldn't be that way. But we appreciate that you guys are here for us and for the job that you do, I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I too, I guess it's okay to say thank you three, four, five times, I appreciate that. But I know, um, when I was first elected, this is one of the first big decisions I had to make for our community, and I still, I'm. Happy, happy that I made that decision, it was really tough, um, and, and we can see, um, it was much needed. You know, it was a big change for us, um, and so I too appreciate how things have evolved. And that, looking forward that they will continue to evolve, because I know it's not all, um. It's not all figured out, um, especially the staffing issues, one of the biggest things that I always hear. Is like, oh, we don't have another, they're not in Millenocket all the time, we need somebody here, even though, you know, they say they are, and I can understand. Based on your description of what's happening around staffing, and I knew that anyway, but you know, community at large always doesn't, that. Um, you're trying to do the best that you can under the circumstances, and you have three com- uh, communities to cover. So um, going forward, I appreciate too, knowing that communication is gonna be a bit better. And like Peter has shared, that he's had a chance to speak with you quite often, and working through some of those things as well. We'll look forward to quarterly updates, but um, yeah, thank you for what you're doing for our community, um, and. Let's keep working together, thank you.
You, Counselor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, well, I too want to say thank you, um. And I do appreciate this communication, this is the first time that I've, um, I've been on the council for a year, so it's nice to have you here and to hear. Um, an update in communication in person, so I think if we, you continue to come quarterly and, and speak with us, that's gonna. Just change things dramatically, um, I'm sure you hear negative things, but I just want to assure you that I hear a lot of positive things. About the East Millenock Police Department as well, um, and my experience, I am a school employee. Your relationship with the schools here in Millenocket is wonderful. There, there, your officers are in the schools, they're developing relationships with the staff and the students. Um, they respond when we need them, so I am very happy as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demme.
There was something I wanted to say, but um, I was waiting for the right time, and this is kind of like an elephant in the room kind of. Statement that I want to say, and, and I hope everybody out there is listening. All of us counselors deal with townspeople in Millenocket. And of course, we know that there's a good chunk that would like their police department back, and there's a good chunk that are very happy with the services that are being provided. I have something to say to both, both crowds.
It's always yours.
Until such a day that Millenocket does have a police department back, I want to make sure that you guys know that you're welcome. Because often I hear too much about this and that, and the, and the pros and the cons. And why are we re- regionalization of this and regionalization of that? What's really the cost savings over here, the cost savings over here, at the end of the day. Your families and your communities being protected. Sir. So beyond a thank you, I want to let you guys know, to me, you're very welcome. And at least half of the people out there in Millenocket feel the same way, uh, and to those that, that want their own department back. It's very, very difficult. Because who says that if we had one, we could staff it, who says that we would save money, who says anything, I mean, this is the direction that we're going. So at the end of the day, can you sleep at night knowing that you're being protected, your kids are being protected? That, that's pretty, pretty much the gist of what I want to say, I, I want to make sure you guys know that you're welcome here and, and not just. Doing it for a paycheck, because I know from speaking to you, Brad, that it's more than that. And from knowing the, so the officers, it's more than that, and the five-year contract is designed. To make it more attractive. Or, I mean, there's out clauses, of course, if you guys want to get out, or if we want to get out, there's out clauses in all those contracts. Come a day that, that we should find ourselves in that situation, but until then. The security of your officers that want to work in Millenocket or even live in Millenocket. They want that longevity, they want to know that they're gonna have a job for that period of time. And not just for six months, just here for six months, and then I go fuck, work some rounds. So there's many benefits to having a long-term contract. But you're not tied to it, if the situation changes, so. I just think as far as, and I hope I can speak for most of the council on this, that, that we, we really do thank you and welcome. That's, that's what I'd like to say.
I think, one thing, if I may, yep, um. And I, I think the chief would probably echo this, is, you know, I've worked. You know, when I first started in law enforcement, I started in Millenocket. Um, and I've worked in East Millenocket since two thousand twelve. And through, you know, multiple different chiefs up here, multiple changes in the community, you know, I've seen how things have gone, and. And not just in law enforcement now, you know, in public safety as a whole, the only way. You know, because I've been around it since, you know, twenty-plus years, the only way we're gonna succeed is. More communities and agencies working together for the same common goal, so. Prior to when it was, you know, Jesse's Millenocke PD, I would have never, ever fathomed, we'd have some of the things like K nine. D R Es, um, the equipment we have, the training that we can. But because of that combined effort of the three communities pooling together. We've been able to, you know, expand our services, um, but also, you know, being budget conscious in, in three communities. So I think that's a big thing, you know, we've hired, um, some young officers that have come here, that have moved here. Um, from out of town, we've got people to move back home to the Katon region because of. Um, the consolidated services, and that's really, I mean, what we're looking for. Um, but some of these officers are being able to get specialized trainings, which is a big thing in tension, um, that we, you know, talked about it. I think because of the support of three communities instead of one. It allows us better opportunities of that, and I know when it has come to grants. That's allowed us more success with some of these grants as well, because that money is not just supporting one town, supporting three towns. So I, I think that's, you know, an important thing to note as well, that three towns just working together on some of these things, I mean, it's so different in the fire service now. Millenocket is not gonna go to a house fire by themselves anymore. You know, none of these communities up here are gonna handle a true emergency by themselves anymore. We all, you know, relying on each other to get the job done, and each town is just kind of, you know, putting their pieces in, into the puzzle to make it all work, so. You know, it, it goes both ways, you know, we appreciate the support from, you know, the town of Millenocket, East Millenocket and Medway, so we can, you know, provide the service to everyone.
Thank you. Either Counselor Pelletier or Counselor Mackin, do you have anything you'd like to share? Counselor Pelletier.
Certainly want to echo everything that's been said, and I think it's been the right direction for the community. And uh, look forward to along the relationship with the East Millenock Police Department, thank you.
Thank you. I'll go down to the public, anybody from the public want to have any questions, comments, certainly, come right up, name and address, please. You got it.
Seventy-two Rustic Avenue, Millenocket, yeah. I'd like to uh, just. Reiterate some of Jesse's comments, and I see the officers uh, all the time in a good way. And uh. I always believed we should have our own department, but to go along with Jesse. Uh, East Millenocke Police Department, maybe we ought to change the name of that, but uh. There, what I've seen and what you don't see, I think they've uh, done a superb job, an excellent job. Uh, I don't think you, the three towns could have a better. Regional department, uh, if we tried, but uh. Like I said, I, I see them all the time, there's a couple of little things that I'll email them sometime on. But uh, everything I've, I've seen has been pretty positive, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Yes, name and address, please. He did it the first try.
Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. Um, I am one of them that Jesse's talking about, um. Yeah, I'm not so much concerned about where the police department is located. What I'm concerned about is the number of officers that is patrolling each. Shift. I fear for not only the citizens, but the officers. We have some not very nice people out there sometimes. And if the officer that is patrolling in Millenocket. Has to wait for an officer to come from East Millenocket to help. That may not end well, that's my concern, not where it's located, thank you.
Thank you. Brad, do you want to address that?
Um.
That concern?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we would love to be able to staff two officers in, in every town. But to be quite frank, looking all across, I mean, I can think of one agency alone that, um. Or one community alone, that's probably almost double the size of our three communities, and they're running one officer. A lot of times, and they're relying on the towns next to them, sent backup. So it's happening nationwide, we would, you know, love to, you know, be able to upstaff more, but we also have to. Think uh. Diligent budget as well, but that also goes back to why we are very firm on our minimum of two officers. Because, you know, even if the officer's in East Millenocket, and there's an officer that needs assistance up here, talking five to seven minutes. Now, you have to wait in our next closest agency to us, and that's the other thing that um, is unique to the Katon region, nobody else around us. You know, our next twenty-four-seven police department is Lincoln. And we've been to Lincoln to assist them in the middle of the night, because they're by themselves. Um, and there's nobody else out, you know, state police, a lot of times are in at midnight, the sheriff's office is in at midnight. So if, depending on, you know, which deputy it is, you, if you have to call them at two in the morning, you could wait an hour. Um, so is it ideal that sometimes there's one guy up here, absolutely not. Um, but we always have another guy five to seven minutes away, so that's, you know.
Counselor Demme.
Just for clarification, you're talking two officers plus a supervisor, right, on duty?
Depending on the time of day, yes, so like in the evenings, they could.
Everybody knew that.
Yes, so in the evenings, you could have two officers and a, right, sometimes four.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, C- Counselor Danforth.
Thank you, so I do have a follow-up question, once you're fully staffed, is there ever a time where you're looking to staff two people in Millenocket?
Yes, when we are fully staffed, in the evenings, there will be two people in Millenocket. And two people between East Millenocket and Medway. Um, and even some other times, without being fully staffed with some of our part-timers, that's happening. So last weekend, on Saturday night, there was four of us, so there was two people up here, and to be honest with you, the way things were going, there was three of us up here and one down there. Um, so it's still happening now, but when we're fully staffed, that's part of the schedule that we currently have built. Is in the evenings, when it's busier, that it'll be three and four men covered.
Okay. Anyone else from the council? Oh, I guess it's my turn. Uh. We have, between Counselor Demme, myself and the manager, we have gone ahead and met with East Millenocke PD to, to. Discuss and to hammer out this contract for five-year period. Uh, I think it was a very amicable decision by all bodies, that this is uh, the best. And tried to address as many of the needs for the communities as we did. So I was very pleased with the cooperation, I was very pleased with the uh, ability to go ahead. And have an open dialogue and communication on this, and uh, I hope that uh, the council sees their way clear. To uh. Vote in favor of this police contract, it, it does everything basically primarily that we've asked for. And what you've asked for, as far as the duration of the contract to give a little bit of stability for the officers to have. And the increase is so that we could attract these people to fill those two positions that are available now. Um. I've been told by many uh, uh, chief over the course of my time on the council, that if you really want to see what police department does. Go for a ride around in the evening. And you will see just what these officers face alone, sometimes two officers, but a lot of times alone. And what they see and what they have, and it is very eye-opening, it is uh. It makes you appreciate the fact that you sleep soundly in your beds while these people are out there, making sure you're safe. And I appreciate it, I thank you for it, and if there is no further public comment or council comment on this. We will move to a vote. Oh no, we're not voting yet, oh no, I'm sorry, I want to vote for this, no, I want to vote now. Do it, Brad, you or the chief have anything else to add? Thank you. Certainly.
Motion to move the. Order with contract up in the agenda.
Okay, we are looking at the orders, one thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, we'll move that up. If, and it's been motion in second, all in favor, let's go with vote, Counselor Pelletier.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin. Counselor Higgins?
Aye.
Counselor Demme.
Aye.
Counselor Danforth.
Aye.
Counselor McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Midor, aye, we will move it up now, so. Can I ask Counselor Demme, would you please read order one thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number one thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, providing for renewal of contract for police services. Whereas order three eighteen twenty twenty, extended via order number one twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-one. And amended via order number ten dash twenty twenty-two. Provided approval for contracted police services to be provided by the town of East Millenocket. Term of which is set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas representatives from both parties have met within the terms agreement. To present and propose renewal of said contract, it is ordered that the Millenocket Town Council approves the attached five-year contract. For police services to continue being provided for the town of East Millenocket, beginning July first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Demme, second by Counselor McGowan this time, uh, any council discussion on the order, Counselor Demme.
I'm just very happy that I'm reading an order that doesn't have C D B G.
Any other council comment? Down the public. Back to the council, uh, Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Demme.
Aye.
Counselor Danforth.
Aye.
Counselor McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Midor is aye, the motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And now it's the signing of the signatures, make everything legal, chief, thank you very much for coming, Brad. I look forward to it, yes. Okay. All right, Counselor Danforth, can I please have you read resolve number four dash twenty twenty-four? It's there somewhere.
Resolve number four dash twenty-two-four, whereas the University of Maine system is currently seeking a feasibility study for a Penobscot County-based medical school due to legislation sponsored by Maine Senator. Joe Baldacci passed by the legislature last year and signed by Governor Janet Mills. And whereas a useful need for such a school is seen by many people, and whereas Maine's physician shortage is much greater in rural areas of Maine. And whereas medical students from schools located in those rural areas are more likely to settle and practice in rural areas after completion of their residencies. And whereas a medical school located in a rural Maine, like rural town like Millenocket can be expected to entice college students from surrounding areas. To apply to that medical school, and whereas the need for such a school in the part of Maine in which Millenocket is located is clear. And whereas the town of Millenocket has been making substantial efforts to help Millenocket in the area immediate surround, immediate around Millenocket further develop and prosper. So. Be it here resolved that the Millenocket Town Council to support the development of such a school in or near Millenocket. And further here directs that the Millenocket Town Staff to inform Governor Mills and Senator Baldacci and University of Maine System and others. Of this resolve and assist it in locating a place for such a school.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Danforth, second by Counselor McGowan. Um, Counselor Danforth, you, you were first, I think, approached, you and I. Uh, you brought this to everyone's attention. So do you have anything further you wanted to speak on this?
I can just mention that um actually Gordon Street, a town counselor from Lincoln reached out to me and I guess later found out he reached out to some other counselors. Asking if we would sponsor this resolve. They have passed this in Lincoln and basically it's a resolve for feasibility study. So it's just um. Thinking it would be great if there was a medical school located where there's two, you know, hospitals, the PBH, Millenocket, this area. Um, so it's just a study. It's probably, you know, sort of pie in the sky. To think that um a medical school would be here, but you got to think about the future. And if you don't think about it or potentially believe it, it won't come to fruition. So this is just. You know, asking um the powers that be when you do a feasibility study, think about this region um for that purpose.
Thank you, Counselor Danforth. Uh, any council comment on the resolve? I for one think it's, you know, it's an idea and, you know, some great things sometimes come with very simple ideas. And this idea is out there certainly, uh. You know, if it has to be somewhere, why not here? That's my approach. If they can put a medical school here to benefit our communities and rural areas, we are. You know, we are the gateway to a vast area of well, up Penobscot, Roosted County where. Medical attention and hospitals and services are really stretched. And one of the big things we have a problem with is trying to track qualified. And training or whatever to fill positions in our hospitals and our medical staff. Uh, and. It may, it, it may work out for us, it may not, but I think a first step in going ahead and. Giving support to this to be further moved forward. Uh, I can't see what the, what the hesitation would be. And I think it would be a great idea for us to, to support this. Anyone from the public want to ask, want to address anything on this? Seeing none, back to the council. Counselor Pelletier, do you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, all right then, uh, let's go ahead and uh. By voice, Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote on this resolve?
Aye.
Ruth, Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Demme.
Aye.
Counselor Danforth.
Aye.
Counselor McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Madora's aye, it's unanimous. Thank you all. Counselor Pelletier. May I please have you read order, ordinance number one dash twenty-two-four, second reading?
Certainly. Ordinance number one, twenty-two-four, providing for setting of town council stipends. Be it ordained by the town council of town of Millenocket and town council assembled that pursuant to article two, section two oh five of the Millenocket Town Charter. Chapter twenty-seven of the Millenocket Code, salaries and compensation, article one, town council is amended as follows. Section twenty-seven dash four is amended to read as follows. Regular council members will be paid the amount of two thousand per year. The council chairperson will be paid the amount of three thousand per year. Section twenty-seven dash six is amended to read as follows. These increases will commence with a council seated following the November twenty twenty-four general election. Be it further ordained that the town council, that the town clerk make copies of this amendment and distribute to all parties. Known to have a copy of the Millenocket Town, Millenocket Code. Be it further ordained that this ordinance take effect thirty days after enactment.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Pelletier, second by Counselor Higgins. Uh, council discussion on the ordinance. We should. Yes, let's go down to the public because this is a public hearing. So let's go to the public first. Count, certainly, please. I know you know the drill, but name and address.
Bruce Levitt, seventy-two Roosted, Governor Millenocket, Maine. Uh. You kind of know my position on it and I still affirm that. Position, I realize that the council does enormous work. I've always realized that and. Uh, I guess it worked for the day and I appreciate it. But I still believe that it should remain the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, please.
Sandra Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. Um, I believe that um it should be raised. There is a tremendous amount of work that goes into being a counselor, not just the two Thursday of um. Uh, meetings that very few of us actually attend. Um, you have executive meeting, you have, I would guess, three or four at least a week. And what we are paying, no, I don't like the word pay. What we are um giving counselors now doesn't even um give you gas money to get here. Um, so I very much think that it is time. It's twenty twenty-four, not nineteen twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes.
That was a lot of video.
It was so close.
Wait, I'm still in support of this. I think this is long overdue. Guys, it was two thousand and seven, the last time this was done. It's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Ladies first.
Rachel Potvin, thirty-eight, Maine, now.
Yep, it's on. Oh, it was already on. There we go. She's doing good.
Thank you. Um, I just, I feel that you guys do deserve the stipend. I just don't feel like you guys should be voting on your own. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Yeah, John Raven, two thirty-six Highland. Uh, speaking as a prior counselor, I think it's long overdue. Uh, I understand the amount of hours of time that put into this if you do the job right. And uh, hundred and sixty-five dollars a month, pretty cheap, gives somebody up here to put up a lot of the negative. Comments that you had to deal with and the stuff that people don't see. So uh, great, I'm glad it's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, that closes our public comment section. Um, I now would like to go ahead and ask Counselor Danforth if you would please read uh ordinance number one, twenty-two-four amended.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ordinance number one dash twenty-two-four, providing for a setting of town council stipends. Be it ordained by the town council of the town of Millenocket and the town council assembled that pursuant to act. Article two, section two oh five of the Millenocket Town Charter, chapter twenty-seven of the Millenocket Code, salaries and compensation, article one. Town council is amended as follows. Section twenty-seven dash four is amended to read as follows. Regular council members will be paid the amount of two thousand per year. The council chairperson will be paid the amount of three thousand per year. Section twenty-seven dash six is amended to read as follows. This increases authorized by ordinance number one dash twenty-two-four will commence with a council seating seated following the November twenty twenty-four general election. Be it further ordained that the town clerk make copies of this amendment and distribute to all parties known to have a copy of the Millenocket Code. Be it further ordained that this ordinance will take, this ordinance take effect thirty days after enactment.
Second. Motion made by coun- Counselor Danforth, second by Counselor Higgins. Uh. Again, we'll go down to the council first to see if there's any council discussion on the amendment. This is stuff that we discussed earlier and it's Counselor Demme.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I initially sponsored this, this uh, this enactment and uh. Being on the prevailing side, I'm going to be changing my vote to a no vote. Feel that the, although I, I really appreciate and uh. The former counselors and the public that have spoken up for it, I think that the overwhelming um. Appearance to the public is that it's um not wanted. So going against my, my own judgment, I'm gonna be voting no on this. Uh. The public ever wants to give their council a raise, then they can take up a petition and do it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Pelletier.
I guess I'd like to clarify uh something that posed the question. We, we are elected, but. After we are elected, we are employees of the town, legal employees. We tell the same W two information that all employees do. Granted, we were considered part-time, no benefits. And by charter, we're the only one that can raise our own pay. Nobody else can do it. So given that we are employees. And by charter, we are paid a stipend versus minimum labor wage. You, how do you justify paying us under five dollars? An hour, let's say, which I'm sure it's even less than that. Think about that. The amount of time we put in, we're getting a stipend, which is fine. Because we're not in it for the money. And at two thousand dollars, it's still not we being in it for the money. Let that weigh on your conscience.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier. Any other council comment on this amended order? What do we have? Oh, hey, we lost your video. Thank you. Seeing none from the council, down to the public, anybody else who would like to make any public comment on this, on the amended order? Seeing none? Come back to the council. Um, all those in favor of ordinance one dash twenty-two-four as amended. Right, as amended. Yes, that's what I want to do as.
You're, you're vote, you're voting on the amendment to the uh order. I've lost sound.
And it simply changes the verbiage. Counselor Pelletier, on the amendment, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin. Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Demme.
No.
Counselor Danforth.
Aye.
Counselor McGowan.
Okay, so we're not actually voting on it.
No, that's just the amendment.
Thank you.
Aye.
Chair Madora, aye, the amendment passes six, one. Now, we will be voting on ordinance one dash twenty-two-four as amended. Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin. Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Demme.
No.
Counselor Danforth.
No.
Counselor McGowan.
No.
Chair Madora, no, the vo- the motion fails four to three. Means we are going to stay on our current status and our current pay. Thank you, though, all of you for the kind words. Counselor McGowan. Oh, let's go to the manager's board first.
Jeez, I had forgotten this was part of the show. Feels like it's been a while.
Yep.
Budget season does that to us, but thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do have some positive things to talk about a little bit tonight and um for the first time in a couple of months. Uh, we're providing um the full manager's report, including updates from each department. Um, for those just beginning to join us, there are. There's a lot more information in here than I go over um in the public meetings. However, the full. Report is posted on our website. Um, then I highly encourage everyone. To read it in its entirety and see all that's actually going on. So from my office, um, we, Chief Cody and I uh recently had a great meeting with the Penobscot County. Unorganized Territory Administration um and came to a final agreement on what would be proposed to. The county commissioners regarding the contract to provide fire and EMS support to the unorganized territories. Um, this new agreement will benefit the town financially and resolves. Um, the burden that the taxpayers of Millenocket have carried for years related to the. Cost of providing services outside of our uh community. So we're very happy to have. That piece of that resolved. Um. We are very pleased to have worked with, uh, worked through that agreement with the Unorganized Territory Administration. Um, we thank them for their patience throughout the process and um the administration was wonderful to work with. Um, it is, oh, they actually, um, this is past tense. This was put out before Tuesday. Um, they had a great conversation on Tuesday, sent us the official um. New contracts to uh present for consideration. So that's, uh, you'll find that on the agenda later this evening. Um, for both fire and EMS. Um, the next contract to revisit with Penobscot County Unorganized Territories is for solid waste. Uh. Now that our new administration has been through that process. Um, once we expect, um, and have a, you know, a strong relationship again with the Unorganized Territory Administration. Uh, we expect that to be a pretty smooth process and a pretty quick process. So we'll be. Uh, meeting with them in the month of June, um, and hoping to present. Uh, either by the second meeting in June or the first meeting in um. July for, for consideration. Uh, we do know that there are some necessary updates as they, they've not been really reviewed and revised in, in many years. Um, regarding the fairly recent Elksland purchase. Um, so in the very near future, I'll be, I have some uh meetings with. Woodcutting operations, forestry outfits. wood cutting operations, forestry outfits about, um, starting to clear the acreage for the new fire station um, in preparation for that project to, um, start taking more shape and hopefully more rapidly. Uh, we recently submitted into this round of congressionally directed spending. Bruce, to order, to answer one of your questions from your earlier email, that, that is, uh, the USDA is the department we submitted that application for. Um, that's for the engineering and construction of the facility. Um, we were well advised through that process with representation from the USDA and, um, the offices of our delegation. So, um, we do have a, we're, we're quite hopeful that, that will be funded. Um, however, it's not a guarantee and, um, along the way, we, we certainly consider, uh, continue to research other opportunities for funding that project as, um, hoping not to put that large bill on the backs of the taxpayers, um, which is something we don't intend to do. Um, so we've revived a conversation with an outfit called Diego Solar, regarding their interest to construct a solar away, um, array in the back of that parcel near the airport boundary. This outfit has been in communication with the town of Millinocket for two or three years now, um, originally intending to establish their array on a portion of airport property. Um, the ever-evolving, uh, world of solar regulations and the even more stringent, um, FAA regulations have, uh, put an end to that discussion. So we've found an opportunity to use roughly ten acres in the, um, in the back of that Elks property, um, that we, we continue to call it the Elks property, but it's actually, um, it's owned by the town of Millinocket. Um, so, uh, we met earlier this week and discussed a draft lease. Um, I had some worries, some concerns about some of the, uh, stipulations in it. Uh, they were very open to discuss it. They were very accommodating, uh, willing to take it back and change some of the wording to meet our needs, um, for municipally owned land verse private land ownership. Um, it's a, it gets a little more complicated when it's municipally owned. Um, some of those things wouldn't, wouldn't work so well. Um, but so far it's been a very respectful conversation. The, the, the draft lease was uh, more than fair and, and very beneficial to the town. So I, I look forward to keeping that process going and I, I hope to have, um, a lease option for consideration to the council in the, you know, maybe even in the next month, month and a half or so. Um, discussions are ongoing about the remaining acreage over there. Um, there's some, you know, researches leading to, um, mixed opinions on, um, housing verse, uh, mixed use commercial, you know, proximity to the airport is, um, uh, weighs on that conversation and, and other needs in the community. Um, my professional opinion is that we need more opportunity for housing, so I'm going to continue to, um, try to do that. But between the solar lease and the potential housing lots over there, um, within the next year, uh, that parcel will, or that investment will, um, start creating revenue and paying for itself. So, um, that, that is starting to prove to be a successful journey. Um, court lease is, uh, about to be completed. We've been working very closely with the court administration and, um, and our attorney on finalizing that agreement. Um, so we hope to have that wrapped up in the next few weeks. Um, and this new agreement will certainly be more of a financial benefit to the town than it had been in the past. This agreement hadn't been revisited, uh, since the late eighties, early nineties. Um, so things have changed a lot, yeah, in the, in the past few decades. And we're, we're very thankful for the opportunity to rework that and change the rates and, and work together on some building improvements along the way. Uh, it's certainly going to be a busy summer around here. We've got lots of various projects that are set to begin work. Um, the town is doing more paving than, than we've seen in a very, very long time. Um, so we'll look forward to an improvement of a larger portion of roads and sidewalks this summer. The main department of transportation has a pretty major paving project planned for much of Central Street that covers their Route one eleven, uh, Route eleven and one fifty seven. Uh, the culvert and bridge, uh, connecting Penobscot Avenue to Iron Bridge Road is finally going to be replaced as soon as the water flowage is at a proper level. Um, my understanding, you know, over the last couple of years working on that is that that period of time is between, uh, late July and early August. So we, we'll be keeping an eye on that and making sure the process goes smooth. The culvert is, uh, sitting in Bangor at American Concrete, waiting to be picked up and transported in to Millinocket to be placed over there and redo that access. So, Tammy King, visitor's son. Um, uh, the RFP for the electrical work on the, uh, Skeeto unit that we're, uh, that we've been working to purchase for that improvement over there, that was released, I think yesterday, um, we'll be, we've made the down payment on, uh, the unit on the machine that'll actually pull kids up and down the hill, or not down, gravity will do that. Uh, but it'll, you know, assist folks to get to the top of the hill. We're, we're considering, uh, you know, a chute at the top and maybe able to enhance that even more. But, um, so the RFP is out. Uh, we plan to have a meeting with the bidders and, you know, Public Works and, and a few other, uh, folks. We need to make sure we get the right people at the table for the conversation. Um, so we work all of the, uh, kinks in the plan out ahead of time. But that'll happen in the next few weeks and then the installation and electrical work should be happening towards the end of the summer into the early fall in preparation for the winter. Um, this has been sort of a passing passion project for, for Amber and I for, uh, within the administration. And we're definitely really excited to provide that opportunity to the youth and the families in the community to give something really cool. Um, bring that Skeetel really to life. Um, the process for the conceptual design of our future community center begins this summer. Uh, there will be a series of public, uh, community meetings that the public is, as always, encouraged and, um, dare I say begged to participate in. Um, we would love to have your input, um, on the proposed projects. We want to talk about the needs and, and the, uh, necessities that, that should be incorporated into that design, um, so that we can get a really good idea of what our community as a whole is looking for. And from that step, you know, we then go to an engineering and actual design phase. You know, depending on how that conversation goes. So please watch for, um, communication around those meetings. If you're not on our email list, if you're not on our text list, um, if you're not subscribed to our Facebook or, you know, look at our bulletin boards or, you know, uh, we've got information flying out left and right. Please subscribe and, and, and follow along so you don't miss this stuff. That ends my office. We're gonna go into, um, a few updates from various departments here. Again, I am not going to read it in its entirety. Um, Public Works has been doing, uh, quite a bit of training by way of, uh, safety classes and, and other things through the main DOT. Uh, most recently work zone, traffic control and, um, roadway fundamentals. Um, so we're always continuing to offer that crew, um, opportunities to improve their knowledge and, and skillset to, to do their jobs and, and better, you know, assist our community. Um, for their operations, the street sweeping has been underway for a while now. Um, it has been one headache after another. We're dealing with a very old, uh, street sweeper and have experienced multiple breakdowns. Um, parts of it are pretty worn out, uh, and not operating at, uh, its full potential. We do have intentions of, uh, within our next fiscal budget, rather than replacing it in full and being on the hook for those large-scale repairs. Um, we are considering the lease of one of those machines. Um, they last, you know, several years, five, six years lease. Um, it's substantially less money. It's about forty thousand dollars a year. Um, and all of the maintenance and, and that sort of stuff is required, um, is included in the, in the lease. Uh, we've found that many other communities are starting to look into that stuff for their bigger machinery. Um, of course, outside of ambulances and fire trucks, we're not gonna lease a fire truck, John. Don't worry about it. Um, but it is, it's an opportunity and it, and it's a, it provides a huge cost savings with, with, um, top-notch equipment. So hopefully we'll have something like that prepared for our next budget season. Um, a little bit of advice from the Public Works crew. This is something that I actually learned recently and I'm excited to share. Um, the sand piles that you sweep out of your driveway and, and rake off your lawn. Um, it's actually best to leave those in rows in front of your property, um, rather than the little piles. The rows actually pick up a lot easier, uh, uh, more efficiently with the sweeper. The piles, uh, don't do so well and leave a lot more behind. So, uh, you know, when you're doing your spring cleaning or, or whatever it may be, um, just leave that in a, in a, in a small row across your property and, and we'll be able to clean it up a lot easier for you. Um, they've been doing a lot of, uh, snowplow damage repair, um, on tree belts and edges of people's properties. Um, that's, you know, annual normal stuff. Um, this year seemed to be a little more than usual with, you know, we had a, a few thaws and, and snowstorms and thaws and snowstorms, especially towards the end there. So, uh, you know, the, our short-staffed, small Public Works crew is, is, uh, working really hard to address those things while getting ready, uh, to be, getting our community ready to be seen for the, um, you know, Memorial Day weekend, Fourth of July weekend, um, getting everything mowed and cut up around my, uh, cleaned up around town. So they're certainly a busy bunch. And, um, you know, I, I'd, I'd like to offer them a, a sort of apology and some celebration and acknowledgement. We actually learned yesterday that not only is it EMS week, but it's National Public Works Week. Um, not one that I was familiar with. Uh, you know, last year we learned about EMS week and this year we learned that they're both in the same week. Uh, there's a lot of weeks. There's, there's a lot of, um, various new celebratory weeks, uh, being added to the calendar. So, um, we'll certainly make it up to that crew very soon and, and, um, try to do something nice with them like we did with, uh, the fire department, uh, this week as well. So, uh, please, you know, I, I I own every bit of that and, uh, it's my lack of, uh, keeping up with all of the new celebrations. Who does? Oh, also, um, uh, there's a Lori that just joined the Zoom. Um, our policy is that it has to be a first and last name, uh, if you don't mind adding your last name and, or if you want to put it in the chat, if you don't know how to do it, I'm happy to do it for you. Um, I'm gonna skip ahead a ways. I've been talking for a while. I'm gonna go to the airport. Um, there's a lot of great things happening over there, but I think my favorite included from Jeff this week is that he's been invited to attend the National Paper Plane Day at Granite Street School on May twenty fourth. And he is very much looking forward to presenting the award for longest paper airplane flight. So maybe I'll come join you. Oh, that's tomorrow. I can't do that. Is it tomorrow? Is it in the, is it in the morning or is it in the afternoon? Ah, okay. Take a video. Well, it's, it's National Paper Airplane Day, right? So they just keep popping up. Um, the number of aircraft housed at our airport has grown. We're now at, um, twenty-two aircraft over there. Um, s- most I missed it. Most, um, I think are unaware that we actually have, um, uh, an airplane builder over there, um, a business that, that actually restores and builds airplanes. Um, so they have added two to their inventory. Um, we're certainly excited for the new, um, hangar lots to be available. We have interest in, in, uh, leasing new acreage for, um, people to erect new hangars and, and bring their aircraft over there. Um, there's, uh, there's now, uh, did you have it in here, Jeff, about how many people are taking flying lessons over there? Four. Uh, so there's a, there's, oh. Awesome. Thank you, Lori. That, that's really helpful. Um, there's a aviation school based over there again. So, um, that's fairly new and they have four students, um, at the airport regularly learning how to, uh, fly planes. Um, hundred and nine aircraft operations this month to date. Uh, that was on the seventeenth, so I imagine that numbers it's rocketed to one forty-seven in the past several days. Uh, so we can see that, that traffic continues to increase over there. Um, moving over to the work with community initiatives, um, uh, I thought it was a nice touch, um, an idea from the community initiatives director, um, to organize with the, the school and graduating class, their parents, um, to include a rotation of pictures of them and their names. Um, uh, congratulations messages, um, on our digital sign out front. So the entire class is out there in rotation for several seconds apiece. Um, I, I think that's been a nice touch to see as you, as you drive by. Uh, you'll see quite a bit of improvement, uh, to the front of our building. The work continues. Uh, we'll be putting out the bid for, um, the repair of the underside of the awning here very soon. But, um, you know, Diana's done a great job with the bunting's and, um, the, the, the awnings that are on the side, the, you know, the, the nice blue pop now and, and the sign. And, you know, we've got a couple of other things up our sleeves, but the flowers. Uh, we're really starting to have a property that our community, uh, can take pride in. And that's, that, that goes a long way. Um, so we've got a few more things planned for downtown going into the summer. Um, couple that are not mentioned on here is we're, we're shopping for some, uh, nice self-watering, uh, planters. So we can begin to beautify the downtown again. Um, so these are larger planters that store water within them and, and they require less maintenance and then we'll be, uh, looking to fill them with some beautiful colorful flowers. Um, but, uh, you know, the, on top of that, we've, you know, we, we started talking about these street pole banners a while back and when we finally made it through the process. So, um, those are, those have been ordered. Uh, we're waiting for them to arrive. Um, if, if there's anyone that, that wants to see what they look like ahead of Um, if, if there's anyone that that wants to see what they look like ahead of time. You know, feel free to shoot me an email or stop by. I do have some files I can. Uh, share, but they're, they're, they're quite a bit bigger and they're absolutely gorgeous. They depict uh. The highlights of the community and the surrounding areas um with, you know, outdoor recreation and and depiction of the. Uh, the history with the mill and and um, they, they really are impressive, so I'm excited to get those up. Um, she is continuing to oversee uh the community center concept design. Uh, Brownfield Community Wide Assessment where we are um assisting commercial property owners. With. The. Assessments to find out what, if any. Toxins, brownfield related uh uh contamination is the word I was looking for. Um, is in their property and then um we can then move them forward in the process and. Uh, help them get some money to clean that up in the future um to, to speed up the redevelopment of some of these properties. Um, so that we can better and more effectively market them for economic development opportunities. Uh, there's a lot of. There's a lot of getting ducks in a row uh when strategizing for economic development. That doesn't always look like a brand new Walmart showing up. You know, there, there's a lot of preparation that needs to be done. Um, in a community before that really begins to evolve. You know, the awnings erupt, Skeeto projects going along. She's uh the head of that as well. She also leads the events team for the town. Um, who um give out our town of Millinock Scholarship. Uh, it's two five hundred dollar scholarships. Uh, per year to graduating seniors. Looking. Into um college degrees and also, you know, entrepreneurship. Um, you know, so it's a, it, it opens up to. Different sectors of of the graduating class than many other scholarships. So those will be announced during senior night this year. At the school as part of their whole celebration and then. Um, at the June thirteenth meeting, we'll plan to have them here for their formal resolves uh from the town council. Um, I mentioned the CDS request earlier to the USDA. Um, and then, of course, the hundred thousand dollar grant that we were just. Rewarded and following the final steps and to provide grants to. Uh, commercial property owners to improve their properties. Um, that should be going live in the near future. And then we. Kind, uh, she was able to win another one hundred thousand dollar reward recently that we're. Putting the final touches on that will um go towards. Replacement of uh older windows within our building, uh which will continue to. Uh, make us more efficient and and cut bills, um, cut, cut expenses back for the municipal building. Um, and then one more ten thousand dollar grant recently from the. Uh, main community foundation that will um go to. Uh, better situate the Skeeto funding, so, so some of that will go towards finishing that project. Uh, that was a, that was a real blessing, the, you know, certainly from the beginning of that conversation to now. Uh, the costs have increased as everything else has, so. We're looking forward to the end of that, having all of that money. To do it. Tax clerk, town clerk's office. Um, we're actually doing pretty well by the looks of it with. The amount outstanding from two thousand twenty-four real estate. Um, we're only looking at three hundred and fifty-five accounts totaling roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so at this point in the year, that's not too bad. Um, and then with personal property. Um, twenty-eight, twenty-eight account, uh, twenty-eight accounts. Still owe a total of about nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, so letters of. Reminders there have been sent out recently. And continued communication comes from the tax collector's office. Um, even phone calls and and uh stuff for some account holders that. Have smaller balances due, trying to make that a little more personal. Um, the upcoming primary election and school budget validation is June eleventh. Town clerk and her team are. Getting very well prepared for that process. It's always. An exciting workload. Um, the absentee ballots. The absentee ballots for the validation are available here. Yes? Both, okay. So those are available and can. Also can be. For the primary can be requested um by the electronic ABR system. Mail in, in person or over the phone. Um, the, for boards and committees, we're actually looking pretty good right now. Um, we do have one full seat available on the Recreation Advisory Committee. Um, as well as one partial term to expire in March of two thousand twenty-five. Um, lastly, the two thousand twenty-four boat registration stickers um are available. Um, as well as ATV registrations. Please keep in mind there is now a mandatory agent fee uh. Increase to five dollars on those ATV and snowmobile road uh registrations. There's quite a bit more in here. There's a lot of great things happening at the fire station uh and the EMS. We thank them for all their great work. I'm not going to read in detail. Um, and then. I've included um the monthly update from Ms. Furukawa at the Millinock Memorial Library for your review. Thank you for your patience.
Yes, Mr. Manager. I want to say it's good to see that the scholarship is there again this year. I know you and I were discussing that a while ago. My only question I got on that, does that also include for vocational training centers?
Yeah, vocational, technical schools. It just expands to uh entrepreneurship as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council on the manager's report? Counselor Danforth.
Mister Chairman, um, under the assessing um report. Will you just give a quick update on what's happening with the revaluation team? Some things, some. It's in process.
The property inspectors, assessors have, uh, they took the winter off. It's tough to do with winter. Uh, they've been back out, I think. Three weekends in a row. They, they usually do Friday, Saturday, um, but they've been. Uh, making a lot of progress, uh, getting a lot of properties. Um, reassessed and documented. Um, then they'll give that information over to the assessor. Um, and then for review and then, and then the data entry comes into play. And the new valuations hopefully will be in effect for April first of two thousand twenty-five. Um, so they'll be pretty diligently working on weekends, inspecting properties. Straight through until it gets really hot in July and then again, once it starts to cool off in August, they'll. Uh, work through the fall and um. We have hired for the data entry position to start as soon as they have enough information available. Is there any other? Pieces you'd like to discuss now?
Any other councils? On the manager's board. How about the public? Oh, certainly, that's, yes.
Um, I just wanted. I just wanted to um touch on the thirty day notice aspect from the tax collector letter. Just so the community is aware, um, those will be um probably heading out. As she stated here in June. Till then, pay on the account. That's handled and. Oh, I wanted to touch base on the amount of absentee requests quickly. The primary. Um, isn't a busy election. Um, I was hoping for more. Activities um happening that, so probably count on two hands to see how many. Been out so far, so there is voting in person at the town office. For requesting absentee or you request for mailed.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, yes.
Uh, Bruce Levitt, Millinock, Maine. Uh, a couple of things on public works. I. You know, we're al- always talking about staffing for fire EMS. Police Department uh have worked for public works and realizing the, the size. That it's gone down to, uh, they, they do a tremendous. Work on stressful situations. A lot of people don't realize. The amount of hours they put in, especially in the winter. I think you really should look at uh staffing sometimes and also. With the sweeper, I, I would hope that they would look for a bigger sweeper. And you're right about uh sweeping si- sand out, that it should be just swept out, not, not in a window or a pile. Because the sweeper will ju- just go over. I would, uh, they're looking for leasing it. They've, they always because of price and I understand that I should get a bigger one. I would also. Under. The fire department uh implore this council and town manager. Because the amount of seniors, guess I include myself in that. That. We would find a more central location. I understand they want to build that way. As of right now, I, I don't foresee it. You know, it, it may happen, it will happen. But the majority of uh town is senior citizen. All the way up into, I know one lady and she still got her mind that it's going to be a hundred and three in July. Now, we, uh, if you talk about Kelly's Trail. Or across the tracks. The time. And I know this from experience. Can be seconds or minutes that a life is in danger. And if it's, and I'm not sure exactly where the land is, whether. On the beginning or the end of the Craig stretch. But that's a significant amount of time for a hot problem. Or another problem, especially teens. And I know we want more youth in this area and I agree with that, but. I would implore this council to look at. Other possibilities. Out of town, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, Bruce, so you will know though, when the committee that looked at locations, we. No sound. And we pursued, and like I say, we had a couple of prime locations that looked really good, but the owners refused to sell. So we did our due diligence greatly. I understand where you're coming from and I don't disagree with you. But we went with the area that gave us the best uh visibility in that moving forward, just to let you know. Anyone else from the public? Oh, sorry, Mr. Manager.
Not speaking as a member of the public, but somebody who was involved in that process even before I was in this position. And as was discussed in many, many public meetings, which, you know, if you're a fan of YouTube, you can go on. You know, watch some of those um recorded meetings, but. The location chosen for the fire station. Would not actually affect the call times that we're experiencing now. Um, with the position of this and the, um, you know, in and out of the trucks and the traffic on that street and the. Uh, ability to turn out of it um and make it to Central Street. You know, it's a lot easier to get out in a hurry. You know, from the end of Central Street up there and and get to the destination than it is to navigate this. Uh, congested area over here on the Roosted Avenue. Um, we had that actually, you know, looked at and studied and and. Had some experts weigh in on it. Um, I know um Chief Malcolm at the time was very involved with that. Um, Chief Cody weighed in on it once he uh became involved. Um, the call times would not get worse, but very likely could even improve, uh, given the new location.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, just to clarify on one of the comments that you made. Cause that selection was made before I even came to the council and and to the committee. Um, I think one of the strongest reasons that you guys selected that was for access for the airport, correct? That's what we were told.
Also access to the airport because there was.
Lot of time of trying to get commercial flights to come in here. And for the FAA, FAA to uh be able to sanction those because we needed to have, thank you very much. Some kind of fire response within a certain amount of, of uh. Distance from the airport. We could either have it onsite or. Abutting the surrounding area, but we also, like I say, we went to a lot of other locations and looked at. Probably a half dozen other locations in town. And we examined everything and it's, it was. The two that pop out most in my head and I don't want to really get into area, but. The frustration of having the owner say, no, thank you, I don't want to sell. And when they would have been good locations to have, it would have been more centralized to, to the, the living area within the downtown area. And still wouldn't have been that much. We could have gone ahead and placed a, a. Fire truck at the airport and in a building there and had a, a presence. But unfortunately, those, those sites just didn't, didn't materialize, so we went with what was best we had to accomplish. All the proximities plus availability to the airport.
Thank you. I thought, yeah, cause that's what it was, we were told as a council, that it was because of the access to the airport.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll give you that one.
All right. But you can't wait for those new microphones.
No, I can't. No, no, that's true. When the music stops, we have our microphones in front of you. That's the one you got. Seeing nothing in the manager's report, let's move on to uh. Council McGowan, will you please read order one thirty-three dash twenty twenty-four?
Certainly. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Order number one thirty-three dash twenty twenty-four.
Providing for execution of the town warrant for May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. It is ordered that the town warrant for May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents is hereby approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel uh motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth. Any big hitters, Council McGowan?
We do. We have several, so hang on. We have uh eleven thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-four cents to Green Thumb Lawn Service. That's our annual maintenance plan and then fertilization and grub prevention at the cemetery. Twenty-one thousand fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents to Harris Computer Systems. That's our annual fee for our uh the town's trio software program. Twenty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents to Hoyle Tanner and Associates. That's legal fees for the airport reconstruct. Four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to to Lincoln Rental Systems. That's for the porta-potties um at the bandstand in Peddler's Hill and also the extras that we ordered for the Eclipse. Four thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents to Main Technology Group. That is our tech support contract. Forty-one thousand one twenty-eight fifty-three to Main Water Company. That's our hydrant rental. Twelve thousand five ninety-five twenty-eight to Stryker Flex Financial. That is the lease for the ambulance carts. Twenty-three thousand seven fifty-nine forty to Tow Pro Lifts. That was a deposit uh for the work on the ski tow project. And eight thousand two forty-six fifty-seven to Versant Power for the streetlights.
Thank you very much. Any council comment on the order? Down to the public. Yes.
Jeff Campbell Airport Manager, I just wanted to clarify on the Hoyle Tanner bill. That's for engineering services, not legal services. That's for the that's for the design of the airport runway.
Thank you.
The expand.
Thank you. Yep. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, back to the council. All those favor uh order one thirty-three dash twenty twenty-four, Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Council Mackin? Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Dumeck?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Mador, aye. That's unanimous. Council McGowan, can I please read you, have you read order one thirty-four dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, order number one thirty-four dash twenty twenty-four, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars ninety-six cents is hereby approved. Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor, Council Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Backen?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Dumeck?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Mador, aye. It's unanimous, seven zero. Council Higgins, can I please have you read order one thirty-five dash twenty point four?
Yes, Mr. Manager. Order number one thirty-five, twenty twenty-four. Approval of an application for a particular license for McDonald's. It is ordered that the attached application for a particular license is hereby approved for RC management. See Ronald Lydic, address Falmouth, Maine, doing business as McDonald's, one Sycamore Street, Melanocque.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, second by Council McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor, Council Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Dumeck?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Mador is aye, it's unanimous, seven zero. Council Mackin, can I please have you read order one thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four?
Order one thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four?
One thirty-six, I'm sorry.
Um, what?
One thirty-six.
Oh, okay. Don't know where that one is. Sorry.
That's all right.
Order number one thirty-six, twenty twenty-four, providing for approval of a application for a particular license for Melanocque Variety. It is ordered that the attached application for a particular license is hereby approved. For Daniel Nelson, business address one twelve Central Street, Melanocque. Doing business as Melanocque Variety, one twelve Central Street, Melanocque.
Second. Motion made by Council Mackin, second by Chair Mador. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council. Council Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Dumeck?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Mador is aye, it's seven zero. Council Danforth, can I please have you read order one thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four?
Providing for approval of an application for a victual license for Appalachian Trail Cafe. It is ordered that the attached application for Victor's license is hereby approved for Leah Malcolm. Business address two ten Penobscot Avenue, Melanocque, doing business as Appalachian Trail Cafe, two ten Penobscot Avenue.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, second very strongly by Council Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Back to the council, Council Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Dumeck?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Mador is aye, it's seven zero. Council Higgins, can I please have you read order one thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, Mr. Man- uh, Mr. Chair. Order one thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Approval of municipal ATV grant application with Northern Timber Cru- Timber Cruisers. Whereas the Northern Timber Cruisers are seeking a munis- municipal T ATV grant. From the Maine Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry Bureau. Of Parks and Lands to fund the bridgework necessary for the completion of the trail connection to East Melanocque. Is ordered that the Melanocque Town Council approves the submission of the attached application and authorizes. The town manager to sign any necessary documents.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, second by Council McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Back to the council, Council Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Dumeck?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Mador is aye, it's unanimous. Council Mackin, can I please have you read order one forty dash twenty twenty-four?
Okay. Order number one forty, twenty twenty-four, providing for approval of Penobscot County Ambulance Protection Agreement. Whereas the most recent agreement for providing ambulance service. To unorganized territories in Penobscot County has expired and it. Administrative teams from both the town of Melanocque and the Penobscot County Unorganized Territories. Have agreed to present the terms set forth in the attached agreement to their governing bodies. It is ordered that the Melanocque Town Council, at the re- recommendation of town manager and fire chief. Approve the attached Penobscot County Ambulance Protection Agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Council Mackin, second by Council McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, Council Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Dumeck?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Mador is aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. Council McGowan, can I please have you read order one forty-one dash twenty twenty-four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order one forty-one dash twenty twenty-four. Providing for approval of Penobscot County Fire Protection Agreement. Whereas the most recent agreement for providing firefighting services to unorganized territories in Penobscot County has expired. And administrative teams from both the town of Melanocque and the Penobscot County Unorganized Territories. Have agreed to present the terms set forth in the attached agreement to their governing bodies. It is ordered that the Melanocque Town Council, at the recommendation of its town manager and fire chief. Approve the attached Penobscot County Fire Protection Agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. None, back to the council, Council Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Dumeck?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Mador is aye, it's unanimous, seven zero. Alrighty, reports and communications. War Committee for the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four council meeting will be Chair, Chair Pelletier.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Louis, you got a promotion.
No, thank you.
That's a little bit of a coup here. All right, Council Pelletier and Council Danforth, are you both available?
Aye.
Alrighty. All right, Chair Committee reports.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will just um mention a couple of things from the um age friendly committee. We did have a meeting on May fourteenth. Um, a couple of the highlights, um. Uh, we're working on the, or should I say Barbara, who's chairing um or leading the effort for the farmers and artisan market, provided an update. Um, the date we will start having the first farmers and artisans market during Independence Day celebrations and so July sixth. And we'll go all the way till October um twelfth, except for September fourteenth for trails and festival and if vendors want to participating in that, they can. Um, Design Lab is working on a logo for us to use for marketing, so um we can get the word out and there's a a nice write-up that'll be in the newsletter and we'll get some. Words out, um get the word out for that. So that's coming along light nicely. Last year was the first year, started a little bit slow. The weather didn't cooperate, but we're really hoping that this summer season that that can grow. Um, the other thing that I'll mention, um our community garden spot down there at Kermit Crandall Park. Um, nine out of the TED um beds are spoken for as far as the little plots. And so, and we have a couple volunteers stepped forward to help weed and and keep that um. Um, looking nice as well. So um the folks that have signed up and for that are really happy about that and I'm happy that this is continuing and. The community garden um is being utilized, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh. We will be, I as Chair of the Economic Development Sustainability Committee, we will be meeting. I am trying to coordinate a time with the town manager to be able to have that. You will notice that in your box, I put copies of the the short-term rental agreement. So uh for you to to have time to go over and look over before we have the meeting. So I will get in touch with the people and that committee to uh set up a date and time to have that meeting. Uh. Anyone else within the committee or chair reports? Seeing none, uh it's time now for the two-minute public comment. Uh, again, this is a time where the the, anyone from the community can ask anyone from the council any questions they may have. Or make a statement or whatever. Uh, please do not direct your uh comments to any one particular council councillor, but to the council's whole. Certainly, Council Ray- uh former councillor Raymond. Former councillor Raymond.
You got it. Uh, John Raymond, two thirty-six Highland Avenue. Uh. I want to thank the council for supporting the Northern Timber Cruisers again. Uh, over the years, uh the club's been there approximately around forty-five years. And all through that time, we've always had support from the council. All the councils that we've had, ones we've gone through. And uh this year, and on the Somerville side, we went back into third in the state for membership. So we went from sixth to third. And uh now with this uh new grant. Um, we have got the the bridge probably about half constructed. If you want to take a look at it, it's out on the big uh Golden Road across from Pelletier's. The metal part of it's all constructed. The lumber is all there. We've expensed about sixty thousand dollars so far. We're just waiting for the permit. And once we get the permit, they're gonna get that bridge in there and this trail will become a reality. I've attended five uh sportsman shows to share in the expo last weekend. And it's been a real hot topic. A lot of people looking for this trail to open up, so I think it's gonna bring a lot of economic development to this area. Bring some money in this area and I think it's gonna be a good thing for everybody. And uh next week is local support year at Somerville ATV Club. So you go right on Northern Timber Cruisers and you can join up and uh we'll. Okay, yes, but yeah. I really want to say thank you to all all years and uh over the years and and the council that we have now, so. Hopefully, we'll get that open pretty soon, so.
Uh, John, did you want me to share those uh pictures that you?
If you can.
Ooh, visual age.
Go and tell. So this is the start of the the project at Pelletier Manufacturing. That's one side of the beam. It's an arch bridge and the reason they built it in an arch for for the strength of it. Because we're gonna be putting a groomer across it. It's a multi-use bridge.
Right.
This is two arches on it now. And they uh. Getting it all lined up and then uh this is getting it ready to be sandblasted. And uh. It's seventy-eight feet long. And you can ju- I can just about walk underneath the bottom of it on the arch. And then they had to, we put a lot more uh gussoning and re- and reinforcement in it. And uh. This year, uh Jeff Pelletier had the idea of uh putting a set of truck, they have an extra set of truck axles at the at the facility up there. And they ended up putting these tr- this truck axle on it because what they're gonna do instead of having put this bridge on the trailer or something. They're gonna haul it right to the site and we're gonna go right up the Golden Road. Right over the Huber Road and then right down to the site where it's gonna be. They've got a fifth wheel hookup on the other end of it. And it's been all uh primed and painted. And is uh all the, all the, right there, there's a.
Can't quite see it up there, but on my computer, it's green.
Yeah, the picture doesn't quite show the size of it, but it's uh. But for a brook that's probably as wide from Mike and I, we gotta go seventy-eight feet because of in the the hundred-year flood plan. And uh the the lumber is all set up there too, so we we're, everything we've done, we've got it with Pelletier Manufacturing. We purchased the lumber from uh Sterns. And uh we're trying to keep it all in town and Pelletier's been doing a great job on it. It's all painted, ready to go. And the biggest thing now is just waiting for the LUPC permit. So we hope to have that pretty soon. And Pete and I are gonna do a little work on that, see if we can kind of push it along, but like I said, if you want to see it. Just drive right up across from Pelletier's.
Okay.
And they've been, you know, been great. They've done a great job on it and, you know, hopefully. We spoke, we've had two hundred thousand dollars for the bridge to get it done, so. We'll see how it works out.
Thank you very much for all your efforts. Madam Clerk, uh excuse me, Sandy, just one second. I I, Madam Clerk, we we received a uh.
Yes, I've received an email.
Email from a citizen that I want to have her read it into this time right now.
Correct. We did receive an email um from Jessica Pelk. They at four four seven, yes. And um. It was her request to have it read for a comment. Uh, good afternoon. I'm not able to make make it to this evening's meeting as I will be preparing for my son's spring course. As I am sitting here thinking about when I grew up in this town, I am reminded of all the things. There were for us to do as kids. There were far less kids getting in trouble. My girls have been looking for summer jobs. They have applied. All over town and got two callbacks. Why are we not begging businesses to come settle in our little town? I reiterate my precious statement, my previous statement, I'm sorry. I reiterate my previous statement that. There has been zero economic growth since our town manager was appointed. Yet salary has still increased by forty, thirty-four thousand dollars since two thousand and twenty-two. Our roads are trash all over town. Am I the only one who sees this as a problem here? Something's gotta give. Jessica Courier.
Thank you. Sandy, oh, go ahead, yep.
Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset. Um, I just have a question. Uh. Uh, do we have anything from Legal on Charter Committee?
My understanding that, uh, Legal has contacted Council Pelletier, but I'll ask Council Pelletier to go from there.
Well, what we know is that, uh, Legal is looking at it currently, so we should be hearing something I would hope within a month or so.
Thank you, Counsel. Oh, go ahead.
He did, yeah, that's plenty, yeah. Can't go into too much. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes.
Tom Malcolm, seventy-three School Street. I just want to take this opportunity to make sure that everybody that's watching this and everybody that's here tonight. Saturday, the Summit Project will be coming through Melanocque. Melanocque has always been, from day one, we've supported that. Not only as a community, uh, not only as a town, but as a community. Uh, and I urge you all to get out and welcome the, this, uh, grade. They're telling me they got about a hundred motorcycles this year. Weather's supposed to be great. No rain, no hail. And they will come down Central Street, up Penobscot Avenue to the head of the park and down Kattad heading to N E O C. Uh, this is to honor our Gold Star families. So I urge everyone to get out to that. And if I could just, one more. This year is the fiftieth anniversary of EMS Week. In nineteen seventy-four, President Ford signed making, making that illegal Celebration Week. But realize the town of Melanocque, when the Melanocque Fire Department was incorporated in nineteen oh one, had a fire department and ambulance service. We have had an ambulance service in Melanocque for a hundred and twenty-three years. Way above what, what the, uh, average is across the country. So that's some, this, this town, this fire department and, and you, its council should be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Before we break and go home for the evening, I would like to just make one quick, uh, statement which I think needs a little bit of clarification. Uh, I have been around town council as a councilor for the last fifteen years, and that includes several town managers. Uh, even though it is within the town manager's, uh, description to be an economic development director and to try to solicit businesses within the community. In the fifteen years that I have been on the council and the managers that I have worked with, even despite their best efforts, I cannot recall one business that was attracted or solicited by a town manager within the town of Melanocque in fifteen years. So I think it's a lot harder than people think it is. And, uh, I think it is one tool in the toolbox for the town manager, but certainly not the only one. And I will leave it at that. Uh, anything else further from anyone, the public or the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth. Any other, any counsel discussion on the order? All those in favor? Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Aye, Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan? Chair Medor, aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
I'm turning that way like.
Hey, uh, Rachel? I think we have back as information that you had requested that. Oh, you got it.
I did, I ran down.
I just wanted to make sure you had it. Yeah.
Follow me down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alrighty. Not much that, uh, not much. I'll vote down my own raise.